Foundation had honored him. I was not surprised, but thrilled. And I present to you the 2019 Golden Apple Teacher.
So, I'm sure y'all saw me ugly cry on TV. Try not to do that again, but maybe, you know, the Evanston community will get around to. This is a truly humbling experience, to be recognized for the work that I do, the work that I found extremely valuable. To be the teacher that I wish I had, growing up in Philly. It's been a really speechless experience for me as well. Sometimes I'm at a loss for words for what this honor truly means. For me to receive this as a queer, black, male educator, I think speaks volumes to the work that has to continue in the realm of education. I wouldn't be here without students that have come in my classroom, the ones that I have had the opportunity to work with. I wouldn't be here without people trusting and believing in me. I wouldn't be here without you all who worked tirelessly on behalf of us as educators, teachers, classroom teachers, and for the students that are walking through our doors every day. Yeah, I am going to present y'all with this plaque, because they did give one for the school, so I'm going to walk that over to you all. I just want to also acknowledge the tenured teachers today, who I had the opportunity of working with my very first year as the EEA One facilitator. And, you know, again, I just think this speaks volumes to the important work that we have as a community to keep uplifting our kids, and that's what I'm here for. I have one last plug. I was honored with the privilege of speaking at TEDx Northwestern, so I have a TED Talk on April 27th. If you all would like to come and support, you can buy your tickets online. You can find that information if you need that, just let me know. But the theme is going to be teachers educating radically, so that's what I'm going to do. And I want to continue to uplift the work that we're doing here. Thank you very much.
So Cory, stay there a minute. And then in a second, we're going to have you walk around the table and shake the hand of all the board members, and I think presenting that to the board president would be perfect. And in return, she has a pin for you, simply to commemorate that you being here. But the audience and anybody listening in, I just want to read something from the press release, because I really want everybody to understand the prominence and the prestige of being a Golden Apple winner. Cory Winchester was selected as one of 32 finalists for the 2019 Golden Apple Awards. This year's finalists made up just 6% of more than 550 nominations from 71 counties throughout Illinois. As part of the Golden Apple selection process, members of the selection committee spent a comprehensive day here at ETHS to directly observe Cory's classroom teaching, interview his colleagues, school leaders, students, parents, community members. And the award recipients were then selected by master educators who understand and recognize instructional best practices and who utilize professional standards to evaluate exemplary teachers and school leaders. That's Cory Winchester. Congratulations. I don't know, small change.
Wow. This is going to be quite an evening. What a great opportunity for the new tenured teachers to see you Cory. So it's really great. Thank you for being such a great role model, for being such a great example, and lifting ETHS up. Thank you. All right, so our next item is introduction of tenured teachers and...
In a minute, I'm going to turn this over to our Chief Human Resources Officer, Toya Campbell. I'll just give a quick introduction, that we are just very fortunate to be at that very special time of the year when we are able to welcome and honor our newest tenured teachers. You're going to hear more about them tonight, and I will just say, it'll be such a reminder that Cory, we just keep reloading, and we have another group coming in behind you to continue to do exemplary things here at ETHS. So Toya, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. This evening, we have the pleasure of tenuring 22 teachers, and we will begin with Student Services, Department Chair Areseli Kanchola. Student Services is tenuring eight people this evening.
Yes. Good evening. So I hopefully was brief. These are all amazing individuals, but I'm going to start out with an introduction. Helpers, advocates, leaders, social justice warriors, healers, empathizers, collaborators, knowledgeable. These are just a few words that describe these individuals that I have the pleasure of introducing to you for tenure. They're ETHS helping professionals. They chose their professions to help students, not for the glory, not for the accolades. They're helping professionals because they care for the well-being of our students. They help our students meet their basic needs such as health, safety, make better choices, self-actualize, and self-determine. In alphabetical order, I present Pete Butler. Pete has a Master's in Social Work from Boston University. Prior to ETHS, he worked for the University of Chicago Charter School and Beacon Therapeutic Day School in Calumet City. Caring, nurturing, calm, knowledgeable, easygoing, approachable, supportive of students and staff, seeks ways to better his practice, makes students a priority and will go above and beyond, a talented clinical supervisor. His focus on equity is nothing short of inspirational. This is what colleagues say about him. Peter Butler. Fersana Chavda. Fersana has a Master's in Social Work from the University of Illinois-Chicago, a BA in Psychology and Gender and Women's Studies. She did a fabulous job as an ETHS intern, so we hired her. She approaches her work with great care, has a sense of humor, demonstrates unconditional care and love and support for students, demonstrates a high level of integrity and maintains appropriate by high expectations for them, compassionate and towards each individual she meets with. And this is what her colleagues said about her. Fersana Chavda. Kat Dewees. Kat earned her Educational Specialist Degree from the Chicago School of Professional Psychology. Prior to ETHS, Kat worked at Lincoln Middle School in Mount Prospect and Richards High School in Oak Lawn as a school psychologist. Bursting with positive energy, exceptionally hardworking, bubbling and caring, supportive of students, and cares deeply about their well-being, a master of professional partnerships, always willing to support a team member. Her positivity is absolutely contagious, and part of the dynamic duo for the sophomore team. And this is what her colleagues said about her. Cynthia Fuerte. Cynthia has a Master's in Education and a Master's in Science from DePaul University. Prior to ETHS, she was a college counselor for the Schuler Foundation, a school counselor at Lang Tech, and has worked at the university level in academic advising and as an adjunct professor. Invested in the success of all students, caring, considerate, encouraging, problem-solves ways to make our counseling programs better, a natural leader, proactive, inclusive, and innovator, is what her colleagues said about her. Kristy Lambropoulos. Kristy earned her Education Specialist Degree from the Chicago School of Professional Psychology. Prior to ETHS, she was a school psychologist in District 45. Kristy also completed her internship at ETHS, so we welcomed her back with open arms. Professional, highly intelligent, an amazing team player, and fun. Nurturing, caring, great with kids and team members, demonstrates leadership with kindness, relates to students, unafraid to take risks to form genuine and meaningful connection with their students and their families. This is what her colleagues said about her. Deb Ranieri. Deb earned her School of Nursing Certification from the University of Illinois-Chicago. Prior to ETHS, Deb worked at Woodland Middle School and Gurney. Knowledgeable and passionate, a love of teens and their issues, a great sense of humor, fun to work with, an excellent nurse who always looks at the whole person. Thorough, thoughtful, reliable, always looking out for the student's best interests. This is what her colleagues said about her. And finally, Lisa Ronconi. Lisa has a Master's from the University of Chicago. Prior to ETHS, she was a school social worker at Northtown Academy Charter School and York Community High School. Incredibly student-centered, thoughtful, contemplative, professional, grounded, and collaborative, kind to everyone she works with, a loving, warm demeanor, a model social worker, leader, student-centered, and part of the dynamic duo of the sophomore team. And this is what her colleagues said about her. Congratulations. It's been a pleasure supporting these amazing colleagues that we have in our department.
And we invite you to come right down the line, and so we can shake all of your hands.
Next, we have Don Delaio White, who is the Director of the Alternative School.
Good evening. Again, I'm Don Delaio White, Director of Student Support Services. It is an honor to announce the tenure of Joanna Goodson. Joanna has lived in the Evanston community her entire life. She is a second-generation graduate of Evanston Township High School. Her mother is an ETHS alumni, class of 1956, and Joanna is graduate from the class of 1989. She is an active member of the community, providing service through her sorority, Zeta Phi Beta, which has an international initiative to help other people excel through mind, body, and spirit. Joanna received her BA from DePaul University and a Master's Degree from Loyola University. She has been employed at ETHS for approximately 13 years in various capacities: Safety Officer, Substitute Teacher, Paraprofessional in the English and History Departments, and is currently the teacher in the pre- and post-hospitalization program. Joanna will be joining the Alternative School Program in the fall, teaching English and supporting students completing graduation requirements via our digital learning platform. It is a privilege to work with Joanna, and an added bonus to have her join the alt-school team in the fall. Again, it is an honor to announce the tenure of Joanna Goodson.
Next, we have the pleasure of hearing from Leslie Roberts, who is the Chair of the Special Education Department.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor of presenting Joanna Feldman. Joanna earned her Bachelor's in Sociology at the University of Wisconsin and her Master's in Learning Disabilities from Northeastern University. I have had the pleasure of getting to know Giovanna during the 2018-19 school year. As an administrator, I have come to know her as a hard-working student advocate who is not afraid to challenge the status quo in order to meet student needs. I met Giovanna for the first time in August of 2018, when I needed her help to problem-solve for a struggling student. We hit the ground running. She made it clear that she would be willing to do whatever she needed to do to assist. In addition to her role as a teacher, she has served on the Bromley Scholarship Committee for three years, and on the Special Education Department Honor Role Committee for two years. She also planned the quarterly luncheon for this committee. Giovanna is passionate about developing relationships with her students in and out of the classroom, and she is respected among her students and her colleagues. Giovanna, if you ever wondered what your colleagues say about you, they describe you as calm, sensitive, and positive. They believe that you challenge your students, and they have witnessed your students improve and become increasingly successful. You are described by your colleagues as a leader, and they say that you are focused and committed to your growth personally and professionally. They value your commitment to the district's racial equity work, and they describe you as having an open mind and a caring heart. Beginning next year, Giovanna will be the district's new post-hospitalization program teacher, where she will continue to use her talents to serve her students. We will miss her in the Special Education Department, but I am glad that ETHS will continue to benefit from Giovanna's talents. Congratulations on receiving tenure, Giovanna. It is well deserved.
Next, we have the Physical Education and Wellness Department with Marie Levatino.
Good evening. I'm Marie Levatino, the PE Wellness and Driver's Ed Department Chair. It is my pleasure and privilege to recommend Jo Villanueva for tenure at Evanston Township High School. Jo came to us from Noble Academy after receiving his Bachelor's of Science in Physical Education from Northeastern Illinois University. Jo is our lead martial arts 1- and 2-physical education teacher. Although this program existed before he arrived, Jo has been an integral part of the continued development and growth of our martial arts program. During his tenure here at ETHS, he has contributed numerous student-centered lessons and assessments, and added to the curriculum, including meditation practices and, most recently, Thai boxing. Besides the incorporation of new martial arts techniques, Jo has continued to emphasize the importance of discipline to maintain a safe classroom environment, both mentally and physically. If you are lucky enough to have the opportunity to see Jo teach, it is evident that his high standards and expectations are met by each and every one of his students, thus building a trusting relationship and strong community within the classroom. In addition to teaching PE, Jo is very involved in our school and broader educational community. He coaches frosh-saw football and freshman wrestling. Besides coaching, he has been a leader in our adventure education program by volunteering to supervise the yearly camping trips. His ability to bring an element of experience and confidence is a great resource as students navigate through their first camping excursion. Within the next year, Jo will be piloting a new standards-based curriculum for our ETHS PE department, which will help increase student engagement and achievement while updating instructional practices. Jo will implement and lead this innovation in education to foster a positive learning environment within all of his martial arts classes. We are excited to see how Jo will continue to have a positive impact on the lives of all of our ETHS students. Please join me in congratulating the best of the best, Jo Villanueva.
Next, we have Dale Leibforth from the Math Department.
Good evening. It's my pleasure and privilege to recommend Mike Bahi for tenure at Evanston Township High School. Mike came to us from Niles West High School after receiving his Bachelor's in Mathematics Education from Northern Illinois University. Mike has an endorsement for English language learners, as well as an endorsement as a learning behavior specialist. Continuously showing his students and colleagues that learning is a lifelong commitment, he is currently in the process of completing his Master's Program. Mike has continued to participate in professional development opportunities and mathematics memberships to stay on the cutting edge of relevant mathematics teaching. Mike has been very involved at ETHS in his time with us. He has been the lead for our Alex Support Implementation in all of our Pre-Algebra-in-One Algebra courses. He was involved in our Pathway to Honors Geometry Curriculum Development, and is also the course leader for our Two Algebra Honors Team. His creativity was on full display as he organized a Decimals Conic Sections art project for the entire Two Algebra's course team. And he's also created several project-based learning activities and materials for the team, connecting math to the real world. He's an active participant in our CED program at ETHS. Ever since he was a boy, playing with baby powder, that's from dinner, Mike has liked to party, and therefore, he is our Math Department Social Committee Chair. A highlight of his work was in organizing and implementing this year's winter holiday party at my house, which ended at... We'll talk about that later. Mike currently teaches Two Algebra Honors. He also team teaches One Algebra class for us. One of the highlights is the energy and enthusiasm he brings to every room, which is contagious. Just don't catch it when you shake his hand. He has the strength in building relationships with students. Mike clearly has a bright future ahead of him. I'm so excited to see how he will continue to have a positive impact on the lives of students. Please join me in congratulating Mike Bahi.
Not yet. Not yet. There's another math teacher. Sit down.
Sorry. We took too long on the handshake. It's my pleasure and privilege to recommend Christian Hahn for tenure at Evanston Township High School. Christian came to us from Roosevelt High School after receiving a Bachelor's in Mathematics and Secondary Education and a Master's in Mathematics from Northeastern Illinois University. Christian has an ESL endorsement as well, and is also an adjunct professor at Oakton Community College. Christian has been very involved at ETHS and in the broader educational community. He's a co-sponsor of the Asian American Heritage Association Club and has supported our Asian and Middle Eastern Summit. He has helped facilitate our geometry bridge-building competition and math team competitions. He participated in an English language learner support group, and he continually attends professional development workshops to improve aspects of his teaching. Christian teaches and has helped implement our Pathway to Honors Geometry course and was a key part of its development. He team teaches One Algebra and also teaches our Oakton Community College Partnership Course, Elementary College Algebra, which includes several English language learners. This is a course he helped create and implement here at ETHS with another teacher. He has been a member of the bilingual math program since he started at ETHS, teaching EL algebra and geometry. One of the highlights about Christian is his passion for every student's success, using his own experience to dramatically change the lives of his students, particularly his English language learners. Christian clearly has had much success and has a bright future ahead of him, and I'm excited to see how he will continue to have a positive impact on the lives of our students at ETHS. Please join me in congratulating Christian Hahn.
Next, we'll hear from Teri Sowa Imbo, who is the Chair of the Science Department.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Teri Sowa Imbo, the Chair of the Science Department, and I am positive that you will agree with me that these two chemistry teachers I present to you today for tenure will exemplify the formula of what it means to be a wild kid. I'll begin with Gideon Yatrich. Over the last four years, Gideon has grown in confidence and content delivery as he has searched for the precise mixture of lesson segments to deliver a meaningful chemistry experience for every student. He found the balanced equation to include inquiry-rich instruction embedded in culturally relevant lessons based on relationships forged with students. He celebrates students and builds community with shout-outs and power claps. When not in the classroom, you can periodically see him running outside of school. As he coaches our girls' cross-country team and our boys' track-and-field team. He's an elite athlete and true role model for our students. One piece of advice: Don't blink or you may miss him. He's that fast. When speaking with his colleagues, one said Gideon is a unique spirit with a zest for everything. Another said he is 100% his genuine self every day. Gideon has made his mark in the Science Department and I'm excited for what lies ahead. And next up is Tina Lula. You're probably thinking what other chemistry words I haven't used, so just keep listening. Tina is an amazing chemistry teacher, also earning tenure tonight. She came to ETHS with many years of a She came to ETHS with many years of experience and has made a positive impact on our chemistry programs. She is in her element when she is sharing her authentic self with others. Obviously, she is a terrific role model for females in chemistry, and all of her students benefit from her knowledge. She can also be seen organizing a service project around the holidays for her chemistry students, sharing her artistic talents with staff at the Connections Conference, coaching our girls in Badminton, and outfitting the Science Department in our spirit wear. When she learned about the under-representation of some student populations in her AP Chemistry class, she jumped in to be part of the solution. As the Team ASAP Recruitment and Retention Coordinator, she works with all students and encourages them to be their best self. I'm not sure how she manages to remain in equilibrium. She balances her teaching responsibilities and the life of being a student. She is just a dissertation away from a PhD in Instruction Teaching and Learning from Boston University. A colleague commented, "Tina has high standards and is willing to learn from her students. She's not afraid to try new things. She is fearless." Tina and Gideon are like precious metals. When you find them, you don't let them go. Their brilliance and worth are everlasting, and I'm proud to welcome them to the ETHS Science Department.
Next, I'll call Shelley Gates. Shelley Gates is the Department Chair for Career Technical Education. She has two people this evening, and she's also reading for Nick Gale, who is the Chair for the Fine Arts Department, who has won. Not sure who's going first.
I'm going to do Career and Tech at first.
Okay, then, obviously.
Kidding, kidding, kidding. It's alphabetically CTE first.
Okay. So Jeff, come on up. Okay, I'm going to be talking about Jeff Toach, who is earning tenure today, and dressed for success. Okay, so Jeff has two degrees from Purdue University in Indiana. He has a BS in Industrial Technology Education and an MS in Technology with a focus on mechanical engineering. Jeff came to us from Blue Island High School, where he taught industrial tech courses for seven years. And since becoming an industrial tech teacher, I just found this out today, he has taught over 20 different courses, which is a testament to his willingness to take on new challenges and meet the needs of his students. Currently, Jeff teaches two of our Project Lead the Way courses: Civil Engineering and Architecture and Principles of Engineering. And he also teaches Personal Finance and Engineering Design Thinking. We're very proud of Jeff's recent guidance and support of his Civil Engineering and Architecture students, who are participating in the annual Illinois Design Educators Association Competition. And we appreciate his efforts to form partnerships with local businesses to provide work-based learning opportunities for our students. We also appreciate Jeff's contributions, too, and support of our CTE Department team, his sense of humor, usually, and, most importantly, his commitment to helping our students find their passions and develop their skills. Congratulations, Jeff. And next, we have Ms. Jenny Weber. Jenny, come on up. Jenny came to ETHS from Johnsburg High School four years ago, but her connection to ETHS is literally lifelong, as she is the daughter of a longtime, now-retired, and here right now, business education teacher, her dad, Jim Weber. In order to follow in her dad's footsteps, Jenny completed her BA in Business Education at ISU and her MA in Educational Leadership at Concordia. Jenny teaches many different business classes, including Personal Finance, Computer Programming, including our women-only section of programming, web design, and tech apps for young adults for English language learners. We are particularly proud of Jenny's contributions to the ETHS DECA program. As a DECA advisor, Jenny works tirelessly, and really a million hours, to make sure our students are prepared to compete and win in their chosen events. For this hard work and commitment to her students, Jenny was awarded the prestigious Crystal E Award in only her second year of teaching here. We appreciate her incredible work ethic and her willingness to take on new challenges. Jenny checks all of the boxes when it comes to being a strong team player and promoter of everything CTE. And we appreciate you, Jenny Weber. Okay, so, on behalf of Nick Gale, who could not be here tonight, I am going to present to you Ms. Amy Moore. So I promised I would read this word for word, okay? Thank you for the opportunity to introduce our visual arts teacher, receiving tenure this evening, Amy Moore. Amy joined ETHS after excelling at Sun High School and Lane Tech High School. In the hiring process, Amy quickly stood out for the unique learning experiences she created for students. They made snow sculptures along the lake, they designed shoes for vans, and made drums for a parade. How can she accomplish so much? Well, Amy moves a million miles a minute. That is true, we all know that. And she cares deeply for her students. Since joining ETHS, she hasn't slowed down. She has championed our video production and design course, she started a film festival, she earned grants, she created social justice posters, and she helped establish the AP Photo and Graphic Design Course that is unique to ETHS. Amy's work with our Dreamers Club has also shown a level of care and support outside of the classroom. She has helped with college visits and worked with students to create artwork to raise money for scholarships. It's no secret that her room is a safe space. Amy has a bright future at ETHS, and I am excited for her to continue making our department and school a better place. Congratulations, Amy. And last, but certainly not least, is Simone Jones, who is the Chair of the English Department, and she is introducing three people this evening.
Good evening. My name is Simone Jones, and I am the English and Reading Department Chair. And this evening, I have the pleasure of announcing three teachers. Josh Brown, if you could come up. Mr. Josh Brown has consistently been a positive, encouraging presence in every capacity -- I'm sorry, capacity that he serves here at ETHS. His students trust him, his colleagues respect him, and through it all, he remains remarkably humble. His commitment to equity is undeniable. He is constantly prompting his students to think critically about the world in which they live, and challenging his colleagues to consider multiple perspectives. Mr. Brown has worked on developing curriculum and has joined forces with Team ASAP. I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I was particularly pleased when Mr. Brown expressed his interest in Team ASAP, because I know firsthand of his commitment to making our AP classes mirror our student population. A few years ago, Mr. Brown had an interesting student in class. Do you know which student? No, not yet. Very interesting student. This student may have been described as a reluctant learner by some teachers, but that was not how Mr. Brown saw him. Where some teachers may have thought this student to be unmotivated, Mr. Brown reflected on his own practices and made adjustments where needed, in an effort to encourage the student to engage in all aspects of his learning. Where some teachers may have viewed this student as cantankerous and argumentative -- now, do you know who I'm speaking of? Okay. Mr. Brown saw a student who was passionate and thoughtful. Based upon his interaction with this student, Mr. Brown contacted me to see what we can do about moving him from his regular college prep class to one of his AP sections. He was the first and only black male student during my tenure in this position to be moved up mid-year into AP by a teacher's request. Finally -- yes, I think so. That was awesome. Finally, Mr. Brown is a man whose words are consistent with his actions. There's no denying his commitment to equity here at ETHS. But I have hard evidence that suggests that Mr. Brown is willing to do the work even outside of these four walls. On one evening in August, I think it was 2017, I checked Facebook, I tried to get the date correct, but I was at home watching the news, and I saw Mr. Brown on the news holding a sign in the midst of hundreds of people in downtown Chicago that read "In White Supremise Terrorism." I share that to say that Mr. Brown very well could have stayed home. No one would have noticed. But the kind of selfless, compassionate human being that he is stands for all that he believes to be right, true, and lasting. We are truly lucky to have him, and congratulations on your new tenure status. Next, we have Mr. Damian Lapointe. Mr. Lapointe is an energetic, fun-loving educator who will stop at nothing to get his students to learn and grow. In whatever capacity he has been called to work, he has never forgotten that we are here first for our students. Over the last five years, Mr. Lapointe and I have had many conversations about students, equity, and life. Throughout this time, I have never heard him speak about any student in a negative manner. No matter what he encountered or how a student may have presented, he has never talked down about a student in my presence. It is clear that Mr. Lapointe has a heart for all of our students, especially the students who seem to be the most distant. He doesn't shy away from challenging situations. He simply approaches each student with genuine care and high expectations. I am not the only one who has noticed his commitment to our students. As we prepare for the upcoming school year, even his colleagues have been asking if they can continue to partner with him in the future. Students also tend to pick up on Mr. Lapointe's authenticity and respond favorably. Mr. Lapointe has worked diligently to help develop strategies to differentiate lessons in an effort to assist teachers in reaching a wide range of students. His expertise is far-reaching, his spirit is infectious, and his dedication to our students is tangible. Congratulations, Mr. Lapointe, on your tenure status. And finally, I'm sorry, Ms. Nancy Odisha? Ms. Nancy Odisha is a hard-working teacher who approaches each of her students with the spirit and -- I'm sorry, with the spirit of a coach as well as cheerleader. Ms. Odisha never gives up on her students. She works tirelessly with every student she encounters on a consistent basis. Her focus is on meeting the needs of the whole student. She has been known to reach out to various staff members across the building on behalf of her students. As one might imagine, I don't get very many emails just to tell me how great my teachers are doing, although I am fully aware of the fact that there are a great number of wonderful things happening in the English and Reading classrooms throughout the building. However, I have received two emails this year alone for that very purpose, on behalf of the work that Ms. Odisha is doing. One email read, "Nancy Odisha has made a major positive difference for one of the students in my class, and I just wanted to pass along that compliment." She emailed us, asking what this black male could do to improve his grade. She worked with him in FASH to solidify his understanding of positive and negative numbers, and she proctored the retaking of the quiz. When the test rolled around, he got a B instead of an F, which is what he received on the first quiz. She is the only teacher who has reached out to me this year, and not only did she reach out, but she worked with us to support this student. This is just one example of the level of dedication and commitment that Ms. Odisha has to all of our students. It's been a pleasure working with and getting to know Ms. Nancy Odisha, and I would like to be the first to congratulate her on her tenure status.
We have two people who were not able to join us this evening, who are also being tenured this evening. I'd like to just mention their name. Anya Pierce, from Research Evaluation and Assessment, unable to be present this evening because, as everyone knows, she is organizing the statewide -- the school-wide state testing tomorrow that starts at 7:30. But she is also one of your tenure classmates. And Nathan Michaels, from the Alternative School, had an emergency with his parent and couldn't make it this evening. So congratulations to them as well. One last round of applause for everybody in the audience, everybody who's reached tenure. Congratulations.
Very exciting to have you join us. So I am going to pause. You are welcome to stay for the entire meeting, really. We have another two hours? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But feel free to excuse yourselves. I know that tomorrow is going to be a nice, early, and long day. So thank you again for coming. All right. All right, so this is more like we are used to. All right, so next item on the agenda, just to keep this positive energy going, is an update on the ETHS Educational Foundation and Alumni Association.
Well, I hate to call on these next two people, though they'll be the next two to leave. But Joanne Burchie and David Futransky are coming forward, our foundation and our Alumni Association, and I think you're going to not only hear some really great stuff about what these two associations are accomplishing, but how they work in concert with one another, which is really important.
Good evening, everybody. As I was introduced, I'm Joanne Burchie. I am coming up on my sixth year with Evanston Township High School and the second year as the-- Um, I am coming up on my sixth year with Evanston Township High School and the second year as the executive director for the ETHS Foundation. It is my pleasure to speak on behalf of the foundation board tonight and give you our year in review. Um, it's been another wonderful, fantastic year for the foundation. And I want to begin with gratitude to our alumni, our parents, and the broader ETHS family. Because when I talk about the ETHS family, uh, the ETHS Foundation, I'm really talking about the thirteen hundred-plus donors who support our foundation each year. It's our donors who really care about our students and give us the chance to help support the extraordinary vision of District Two-O-Two. Um, our foundation mission to raise and distribute funds to the high school in order to complement, enhance, and enrich beyond the means of conventional public funding, the educational mission of ETHS, really boils down to guaranteeing access to excellence. Um, we look to the district for extraordinary projects to support each year. We work closely with Mary Rodino and the, and, uh, the administration here to select projects off the capital improvement project list. Last week, I had the pleasure of, um, sitting down with Robin Callahan, who's the executive director for the National School Foundation Association. And she confirmed that our foundation's success is in line with the top found- school foundations in the country. Many of our counterparts on the North Shore have fundraisers and special events. But we pattern our fundraising after universities, advancement departments. We use an annual fund, major gifts, strategies that, um, that, uh, higher ed is using to raise money to, to advance the campus. I want to thank, uh, Mark Metz tonight from, uh, from your foundation, from your district board, because he has served on our board, uh, the foundation board for ten years in the last twelve years. And his voice has really lent a lot of expertise and, and been a connection from the District Two-O-Two Board to the foundation board, which has been really helpful, especially at this time of the year when we are looking at projects to support in the next fiscal year. We have other champions for the foundation. Uh, department chairs and teachers who talk to donors when we tour them around the school and help them make decisions about funding projects. And of course, our administration, um, Dr. Witherspoon and Dr. Campbell, who travel across the country with us to speak to alumni and keep them engaged with the high school and their alma mater. So for the last ten-plus years, we have dispersed six million dollars to the high school. Uh, that's been for twenty-three extraordinary capital projects, from the very first one of, um, putting turf on Lazzier Field and Lights, uh, to the more recent projects that were unveiled this past summer. Last year, the foundation, uh, dispersed one point two million dollars to the high school. Over eight hundred thousand dollars alone was for capital projects. Um, and there's evidence of that throughout our campus. In addition to capital or enhance, enriching learning spaces, as we like to talk about, we also provided money for student assistance, student registration fees, curriculum grants, and endowed scholarships. It's, um, we can never thank our donors enough. And a couple of weeks ago, we had an evening of appreciation here at the high school. Uh, there's a couple pictures up there on this slide that show Leonard Schaefer, one of our wonderful benefactors over the years, um, who came back, uh, came in from California and, uh, had some inspiring words to inspire other people to, to step up and contribute to their alma mater. And he compared his experience here to his experience at Princeton. So it was, uh, invigorating to hear how much the high school meant to him, and that's why he continues to give. We hear that all the time from our alumni. On the left-hand side, the photo is a senior, Michael Frim, who inspired our donors who came for that evening of appreciation as he talked about his research on the effects of splashing of Newtonian fluids. Um, how lucky we were to have student involvement. And, um, and the heat dazzled our, uh, our donors. And it really drove home why you should support the foundation. These kind of stories mean so much to our donors. At that evening of appreciation, we highlighted the new renovations in the chem phys labs, the new chemistry fume hoods, the new equipment, the modular furniture. It was pretty, um, dazzling. Um, this was a one point three million dollar renovation, and Mary Rodino has told us that that's a hundred percent funded by the, by our donors, our alumni, our, our benefactors. And at the cen- centerpiece of this new renovation is a research center, the new ETHS Research Center, will give, which will give all students from grades nine to twelve the opportunity to experience research if, uh, with their teachers and in extracurricular activities. Of all the summer projects last summer, um, nothing is more stunning than Door Three. And the foundation was so happy to provide some support. I know it was a fraction of the three million dollars that the, that the district spent on it. But we like to, um, to hear that what we contributed helped to enhance the atrium and, and provide a little bit more Wildkit spirit in that space and a, and a sense of community spirit. Um, another one of the projects that we contributed to last year was the new engineering lab. And we contributed sixty-five thousand dollars towards the hundred thousand dollars it costs to add a new engineering lab for the growing Project Lead the Way classes. Our foundation board loves to get on board with collaborative learning projects and the STEAM STEM initiatives here at the school. Uh, A, we had a donor, the Siegel Family Foundation, who've been cri- contributing over the past couple of years to the STEAM capstone, the, um, course. Um, this goes towards a fellow, and we understand because of the, uh, growing number of students in that, from nine last year to twenty-sixth year, this year, to hopefully doubling next year, that the funding of a fellow really makes that class possible. So usually donors, um, are making unrestricted gifts to the funding priority that, uh, the foundation has, um, set their sights on for the year based on consultation with the district. But occasionally donors really want to give to something off the list, something that's aligned with their passions. Examples of this are the new colleges admission support fund, um, or the untermint fund, which provides twenty-five thousand dollars annually to help kids who want to take, to go on service trips or field trips like band trips. Coming this summer, we'll be adding two more projects that are foundation-funded, uh, the renovated greenhouse and the rehearsal space up in the upstairs theater. We fundraised for those two years ago, but we've set on this cycle of trying to fundraise in one year and then implementing those, uh, renovations, uh, not in the immediate summer, but the following summer. Since September, we have been, uh, really focused on raising money to transform the weight, the current weight room into the Wildkit Wellness and Performance Center. Uh, we've been spreading, uh, sharing materials about what that, um, new space will look like and how it will benefit our students, not just our student athletes, but all students in our, um, phys ed classes. Um, and, uh, and our special, um, ed students bec- uh, will benefit from the new adaptive equipment that will be part of that project. Before I turn it over to my esteemed colleague, David Futransky, who I get to the pleasure of working daily with and, um, thinking of ways that we can keep our alumni close to us. I just want to say that one of our missions and one of the things that we keep in front of us is becoming more visible. And we look to you for ideas and suggestions on how we can become more visible to our stakeholders, our, our community, our alumni. Um, we want to, them to connect with us and, uh, and remember that, um, ETHS is a, is the, the crown jewel, and we can keep moving it forward.
Thank you, Joanne. I'm David Futransky. I'm ETHS class of nineteen sixty-nine and a recovering history teacher. As Joanne said, the foundation and the alumni association work closely together. The alumni association represents all the people who have come through the doors of ETHS, um, on the student side. And we recently completed a project we do every five years of, uh, putting together a directory. We use a vendor who surveys our alumni. Uh, we've got some statistics from that directory. There are over eighty-three thousand alumni over the hundred-and-thirty-five-year period history of ETHS, and close to sixty thousand of them are alive today. We have, oh, we contacted over forty-one thousand as part of the directory update process. And we got ten thousand responses on updated information on our alumni. It's a pretty big group. When I think of colleges and universities, there aren't a lot that come to having sixty thousand alumni that they deal with. They tend to be schools, the major state flagship schools that have undergraduate populations that produce significantly more than that. We, uh, we publish the kit newsletter. Um, it comes out twice a year. The spring edition is currently in its final edit stage and will be mailed out. Uh, we send it out both electronically and by mail. And we've seen a shift this year of over a thousand people from hard copy to electronic copy, which saves us both printing and postage costs. We continually in each issue try to get people to give us electronic updates. It's one of the areas where we continue to look at an opportunity. How do we connect with our students who don't know what their email is going to be five years after graduation? To get a way to electronically connect with them and to keep them in touch with us. Something we're working on, it's something that's a challenge that faces all alumni-based groups. Our alumni have been very generous and contribute the bulk of the money that the foundation has raised, as Joanne said. One of the ways that we connect with them is we hold a ver- a variety of activities. We have gotten much better at working with fiftieth reunion classes. We now are working with fiftieth reunion classes two to three years ahead of their reunion to get them thinking about and planning for their reunion. Uh, the class of nineteen sixty-seven changed the paradigm for us a little bit. They started to raise money for a class gift instead of leaving the leftovers from the party. The difference was from a five thousand dollar gift, which was about normal for classes, we saw over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the class of nineteen sixty-seven. Nineteen sixty-eight, uh, has given us a very significant gift. And the class of nineteen sixty-nine has a goal of raising over a hundred thousand dollars. So we're starting to see the reunion activity, and we don't run the reunions, we just support the classes in planning their reunions. We wish we could help them more. I know that, you know, classes, you know, but we start to see, and the sweet spot for classes now becomes somewhere after the thirty-fifth reunion, they start to get more involved. Uh, people are having their kids older, so it's not the twenty-fifth anymore, we're starting to see more at the thirty-fifth. Uh, this year, we had a reunion of the chess club. It was started, it was organized by some people from the class of nineteen sixty-nine who participated in the first national championship test chess team that ETH had back in, uh, fifty years ago. And with the current chess team, we invited alumni. We got about seventy-five or eighty people who came back and played a tournament against our current team. You know, they all had a great time, and we ended up with contributions from people to the foundation who had never supported ETHS, and many had never been back inside of ETHS. We had an exciting day last December when we celebrated the hundredth duel in the pool. Um, at the swimming meet against the school to the north. Uh, it was the hundredth and a hundredth meet between the two schools. Um, and we not only had t-shirts for the kids from both teams that they were wearing, we had over a hundred and fifty alumni show up for that evening. Um, and not only did they come that night, they came back the next morning. Our alumni came and had brunch with the boys swim team after their practice on a Saturday morning. And the thing was supposed to last for an hour, it went three. The interaction between our kids and the people who swam before them was fascinating, was really well-done, and very much appreciated, uh, by everybody. We do best at these when they are put together and organized by cadres of chess players, swimmers, fiftieth reunion class members. Uh, we have reached out and we are working on groups like Combined Studies, which was suggested to us, uh, before. We're trying to get a core group, and we almost have enough of a core group to make something happen in, uh, an area of English and History that, um, doesn't exist in the building today, but shaped the lives of many, many students from nineteen thirty-nine until almost nineteen eighty. So, uh, there's a long history of a program that, uh, a lot of people took part in. We're trying to build up something in that area as well. We give mini-grants to a number of places throughout the building. Our board every quarter is dealing with applications that have been submitted from teachers. They're mainly to help kick something off, to try something that they couldn't do, that there isn't funding available from some other place. We have had a lot of, um, interest from science classes where they've wanted to do something in the forensic science. Uh, they wanted to try a set of experiments. We helped them buy materials they need. They piloted it, they came back and put it into the de- the department's budget for the coming year. So we help people start off with those sort of ideas. Uh, we support buses for students to go to, uh, state basketball games. Um, I hope that's an ongoing thing, and, uh, we'll see how we do next year. But we have, uh, been able to, uh, our alumni board has supported kids going downstate or helped subsidize the cost of that. And we give five one thousand dollar scholarships a year to our alumni. We hold air events around the country. Um, we, last year, held some events in, uh, New York City area and in San Francisco. Dr. Campbell came out with us, uh, to speak to alumni out there. We're working on our calendar for the next year, but we do plan to do something in the, the alumni association plans to do something in Chicago. Uh, probably in the late summer, uh, similar to what we do when we're on the road. Tell a little bit about what's going on at ETHS, and we are in the midst of putting something together. And we'll probably be working with the foundation on that as well. Our Distinguished Alumni Award has currently seventy-seven people who have won the award. The date is changing because of changes in the school calendar to November eighteenth. We are, we have a wonderful pool of applicants or of nominees. We'd love the pool to be broader and to have more women in it, but we can only deal with what's nominated. So if you know of women or people of color or anyone who has been a, who should be considered for the Distinguished Alumni Award, if you're watching from outside of the building tonight, send it to us. There's a form on the webpage. Just submit the name, and we will be happy to go out and get more information and bring that person to the committee. And that's really all I have. So we'll take any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Lots of really good information. Really doing some creative a- activities, getting the alumni, um, raising money for our, our wonderful institution. Okay, questions? Anybody have questions, comments? So, Mark?
You know, I just wanted to comment. Uh, Joanne mentioned I've been kind of hanging around the foundation board for a lot of years. Realized there were so many. Um, I was, uh, a trustee on the foundation board before I, I came on this board. Uh, it was when the foundation was being formed, it was the first board. And these last several years, every time I go to a foundation meeting, I sit there as quietly as I'm able, right? And just the juxtaposition of what the foundation was when we started it, not very many years ago, to what has been accomplished now. And you see these highly professional, dedicated, talented people actively engaged in building that organization and fulfilling its mission. It's inspiring. And it, it just, you know, how fast this happened has, has been a, a truly a success story. And I think, uh, uh, the primary cause of that, of course, is the, the affinity that people that- that people that come from this institution feel for it for their entire lives. And we see that play out over and over in many, many different ways. But also, it's a testament to the vision of the organization and then the dedication of the people that are charged with making it happen. So for all of that, thank you. And thanks to all the wonderful benefactors and supporters. It really means, as Mary can attest, it means a lot to this school. For reasons we don't need to go into tonight, we're all familiar, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. All right. Thank you again for your presentation and your hard work. Thank you. All right. Our next item is the two thousand nineteen twenty school calendar revision and the two thousand twenty twenty-one school calendar.
And we have Dr. Robinson, Keith Robinson here, associate principal. You've already received the calendars. The one for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty is just kind of the fine tuning. You had approved an earlier version, but there are always things that, that develop. And then we also have for you the twenty twenty-one. So Keith, I don't know if you wanted to say anything or just answer questions?
I did want to just thank the calendar committee. Last year, Ms. Parsons, you challenged me to get more parents on the committee and we did just that. So I just wanted to say their names out loud. Our parents, Elizabeth Johnson, Diane LaCora, Nicole Parker, me and Paul Wallace. We play a couple of roles there. Some staff, Jody Alperstein, Bill Farmer, Angela Gardner, Tim Herbert, Veronica McKinney, Lisa Oberman, Leah Peekarts, Susan Spillane, Jill Mathias Schilbert, and our administrative team members, Takumi Aseta and Pedro Soriano. So I just wanted to thank them for the five meetings that we had this year and their critical input on the recommendation.
Great, thank you. All right. So the calendars are in our packet. Anybody have any questions, comments, Jonathan?
I recognize that with the, moving to the early start and finishing before exams before the winter break, that that significantly constrains how much we can coordinate with District sixty-five. But within those constraints, could you describe what efforts have been made to coordinate the calendar with District sixty-five?
Sure. I did meet with Ms. Davis over at District sixty-five. And the one thing that we did coordinate are the, the breaks, the winter break and the spring break. They've had some adjustments to their start dates and end dates, which is only a few days. And they recognize that and that's something that they're continuing to discuss with their board.
And are there any holidays that they, they recognize that we don't or vice versa?
I think next year, they're going to have a day of non-attendance for students on Election Day. But the other dates, we're pretty much in alignment with the other holidays and non-attendance days.
I'll point out too, on the Election Day, many of their schools are polling places.
Right, that makes sense.
And you're bringing people in from the outside and trying to screen who comes onto the property and, and all of that. Whereas we are not a polling, a polling site.
Totally makes sense. Okay, Pat, sorry.
So Keith, I just want to say thank you on behalf of all those parents and students who aren't going to be studying over winter break. I know there are many E T H S grads out there wishing that they were in the, still here because that's, I know you've worked really hard to make that happen. And the kids and families really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. I second that.
They're wishing for it too long.
Yeah, exactly.
What took you so long?
And just so you know, we managed to do that with only a three-day difference start date from District sixty-five. We had a lot of internal adjusting to semesters and length of semesters. And this was not easy, but we were trying our best to keep as, as compatible as we could and still accomplish that.
So do they start?
Three days later.
Three days later? Okay.
So we start on a Wednesday. They start the following Monday.
Ah, okay. Good work. Good job. Thank you very much.
I feel like you guys owe me an applause, like all the applause that.
Do you want a pen? I have some extra paper.
But thank you. Thank you so much.
That was great.
That's true. All right. Our next item is comments from the public. Dr. Vegas?
We have no public comment this evening.
Okay. We do have public. All right, thank you. All right. Item number ten is FOIA. We have one, two, three, four, five FOIAs.
Yes, we have seven FOIAs. Some of them are multiple. We have, yeah, a couple from Kimmel, two from Martinius, one from Gomez, one from Smizer, and one from Kulata and the responding packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. Board committee reports. I know that, um, committee reports? Pat? Yeah, Foundation gave yours.
You got yours taken care of, Mark.
All right.
Impressive. So I'll, I'll be quick. I have two. So the EdRed Members Meeting was Friday. And we got an email today that I'm sure all of you saw, but that the amendments to the P E bill were, were put out this week as the Ed is expected. I guess somewhat good news for high schools is we're, they're sort of not exempt, but they're, they're dealing with high schools differently. So it will be less of a change, but unfortunately, middle and elementary schools are going to have a big change in terms of their P E. And, you know, if it goes through as, as currently written, they'll have to hire more teachers, et cetera. So it's kind of a challenge. Another issue that's before the, that's working its way through the legislative process is teacher licensure. Sorry, said that not very well. So they're doing away, they're likely to do away with the basic skills tests, which you have to take in order to be certified to teach. But they're also talking about doing away with the content area tests. And the group at EdRed pretty consistently was against that. Not that it's the be-all, end-all of deciding who our teachers are, but it is a data point. And I just have to say this because it, it really speaks to why it's important what we do. One of the state legislators said, I know the suburban Chicago teachers or districts want this, but downstate, we just need warm bodies. And I think there was a complete appall from the group. We are the northern suburbs in EdRed, but just that is not acceptable. So I think that was pretty clear that the members want to oppose that legislation. Another piece that was talked about was in performance evaluations. There are legislators that want to put in place an, an appeal sort of review process if a teacher gets an unsatisfactory rating. And you have to pull together a panel. There's, there's several steps to it that would require resources from districts. And as one of the members pointed out, what problem are we solving? Everybody has a process in place. If a teacher gets an unsatisfactory and wants kind of an appeal, there's a process. So having to do this yet again, sort of seems like added work. So that, that was, that was sort of challenging. Again, these are working their way through. And then we had an update that actually I shared with you, Eric, right before I came here. But it was a, a law firm did a little update on some of the different legal things related to fair labor and some other issues that I think our, our team already knows about. But I shared that with, with the superintendent. So that was EdRed. And then I had the privilege of going to the National School Boards Association Annual Conference with five thousand other school board members. Some superintendents in there too, but it was, it was pretty amazing. And you know, overall, I would say it was a good conference. There are different strands. They've, I, I think relatively recently, in the last few years, added an equity strand. And, and that was where the best sessions were. You know, just learning about different schools, doing different things to ensure equity. And, and it was interesting because on the one hand, I saw some common threads from work we do. And as I mentioned to Pat and Eric, there were some real blind spots. And it was just interesting to see that, and you know, no disrespect, there was really some strong, good work. But just, it just made me really think about the work we do. And that, I, I'm sure I've used this a million times, but the peeling of the onion to really get down. What are, what are the details? How are we, how are, what are our practices? What are our policies? How is this impacting that student so that we can learn about all, how we're affecting all students? So it just, it was, it was very interesting, really good, interesting people, good work, but also just a nice validation of our work. And one of the schools that won the award for their work in equity was the Des Moines Public Schools, which our superintendent used to be, work at. So fingerprints across the Midwest. So that was exciting. So I really appreciate the opportunity to go to the conference and, and thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. All right. So we are at student board report and Phoebe.
Okay. So on Mar, on Friday, March fifteenth, approximately a hundred to a hundred and thirty E T H S students participated in the international climate strike. So these students marched from outside of E T H S on Dodge Avenue to Fountain Square in downtown Evanston. And there's, all different students spoke and rallied about the lack of action surrounding the imminent threat of climate change. This entire effort, the march, everything, the speeches, the rallies, like everything, was thrown together in six days by a very dedicated and passionate group of students. So the climate strike was and still is, it's an international movement. And it was started by Sweden's Greta Thurlberg. So she had a few demands. And there were also, from there, the group of students at E T H S also expanded those demands to both national demands and local demands. So I'm just going to read a few of those. So Greta Thurlberg's international demand was that fossil fuel emissions be cut by fifty percent in the next ten years. The national demands included the passing and implementation of the New Green Deal, which acts to stimulate the economy through environmental and renewable energy programs, establish a federal carbon tax and establish federal subsidies for renewable energy resources. And then the local demands, which were both Evanston and E T H S related. So Evanston currently has the C A R P initiative. And I don't totally know what that stands for. I did at one point, but I don't anymore. But their goal is to become, Evanston's goal is to become completely carbon neutral by twenty fifty. So one of the local demands was that they follow that and do actually become carbon neutral by twenty fifty. And then the local E T H S demand was that E T H S administrators meet with the green team, which is the sustainability like group at E T H S, to assess and revise its own recycling techniques, energy efficiency and renewable energy use. Kind of unrelated, but a few days later, the E T H S green team sponsored a waste audit, which basically just like checks how much recycling is in the trash and how much trash is in the recycling. I don't have the numbers on that, but it was like fairly shocking, somewhere around like fifty percent of trash in the recycling, which is not good because then none of the recycling could be recycled. So basically, E T H S students and myself hope that E T H S, the board and the administration takes these demands and consistently keep them in mind when making all future decisions regarding the future of E T H S as a building and its students. So from there, quarter three ended and quarter three, sorry, quarter four has begun. Quarter three grades were just released. I got my email with my grades about like, well, I wrote half an hour here, but it was actually like two hours ago now. So I don't want to steal Dr. Witherspoon's thunder because I'm sure that he'll talk about this, but tomorrow is test day for everybody except for seniors.
Only a senior would smile when she says that.
Exactly. So freshmen will take the P S A T nine for the first time. When I was a freshman, I took the park, so I hope that goes better. Sophomores will take the P S A T and then the P S A T ten. And then juniors will take the S A T, hopefully for the last time. And seniors will be at home. This is the third and final time that I'll bring up NASA. But the national, the, sorry, the North Shore Association of Student Activists will be hosting its first ever event to showcase activism through art. The event will take place this Sunday, April fourteenth, at Space in downtown Evanston, which is like in the back of Union, Union Pizza. And then, and it will showcase artwork from E T H S students, but also students from other schools around the North Shore. The event is completely free for anyone who wants to come. And I highly, highly recommend that you and your families and all of your friends attend.
What time? Time?
Sorry, it's from eleven A M. to two P M. So you can just stop by anytime during that time. And then lastly, the student representative elections are beginning to gain some steam. And it's making me sad, but also very excited. As of right now, I currently know of three students who are planning to run. And just for reference, by this time last year, I honestly thought that I was the only person who was going to run. And also both Honor and Emma only ran against one other person. So it's really exciting to see three people this interested in being the student representative this far out from the election. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. It's the Sunday. Okay, Dr. Witherspoon?
Well, I won't even mention the, the assessment day because I think you did a beautiful job on that, Phoebe. But it's, it's going to be a big day for us tomorrow. Orchestrating all the, you know, three different grade levels and all of the different tests and security and everything that has to take place. And each test has different timing sequences, you know, so they'll be finishing at different times. It's, it's going to be a big day. But I'm sure that the seniors will probably not be overly worried about us because they are the one group of students that don't have to come. A few announcements. So this Wednesday, we have, Dr. Nicholas Pierce is going to be here with the topic, A Guide to Pursuing Your Authentic Life's Work. And from what I understand, this promises to be a really good presentation. It's a fan event and it starts at seven P M. in the auditorium. Community Build Day with our Geometry and Construction Program will be Saturday, April thirteenth, this Saturday, from nine to three. And if you're interested, please sign up online in advance. But we would welcome that. And if we could have only done it with today's weather, it would have been perfect. But we'll see. Earth Day Cleanup will be held here at E T H S on Saturday, April the twentieth. That'll be from nine to eleven. And, and so I just want to again lift that up as well. E T H S is going to host a family talk series. That's on Thursday, April the twenty-fifth. The program is called Sexual Assault and Harassment Prevention. It'll begin at six thirty P M. right here in North One Twelve for parents and guardians of current E T H S students. So that's all in conjunction with our sexual assault and awareness and prevention program that we are doing here this spring. The Spring Musical, Legally Blonde, is going to be presented on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of April. And again, the following weekend on the third and the fourth, production is held in the auditorium. And each showtime is seven thirty P M. You can purchase tickets online or at the event. And just a few important reminders. Seniors need to get their fee obligations paid to the business office. Put in a plug for you there, Mary. And we're accepting checks through Friday, April twelfth. And so all families need to check their E T H S account for their fee balances. And this is always very important, that seniors, you know, get their accounts reconciled so that there's no delay in being ready for graduation. As a reminder, we have a non-attendance day on Friday, April the nineteenth. And talk about the year getting away from us. Our advanced placement exams will be given May sixth to the seventeenth. And students taking the A P exams are welcome and encouraged to attend the A P Spring Academy on Saturday, April the twenty-seventh. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. So we are at our action items. The first action item is approval of intergovernmental agreement for reciprocal reporting and school resource officer. resource officer.
You have approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I just, I just have a question.
Yeah, I have something too. Go ahead.
I feel like this is probably a good time, maybe Dr. Witherspoon could chime in, to clarify two things. Number one, I think it's important to highlight within this agreement that, that the city underwrites the cost of our SROs, number one, and that we are employing somebody in the post-secondary, post-high school planning. Ty Kancy has corrected me on how we refer to post-high school planning. So I think it would be great to highlight that. I don't mean to do it. And also to clarify the role of that post-secondary planning person as compared and contrasted to the person who is also housed within ETHS, but is different from that person funded by our city council and their recent vote. Because I, you know, I think this is something that we need to sort of bring, bring to the light and, and highlight. And then I think incidentally to that, it's important also, and I think it's embodied pretty well in this agreement, the significance of having school resource officers in ETHS and how this agreement, our historic relationship, the way this school operates, leads to, I would say, a positive use of SROs. In sharp contrast, I think, to the experience that other schools have with a negative police presence. This is a different kind of situation. And I think we've gone to pains in the agreement to make that abundantly clear. So, so two parts.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I think it's good to lift up both of those items. Yes, so we had initially, when we entered into the agreement that is pretty much, well, it is the forerunner of this agreement and it just timed to renew it. We had put a community liaison, job coach kind of position in it. And, and, and that did okay. But, but what we found is that that wasn't really where most of the work and emphasis was going to get done. And so when, when the person in that position left for, for other career opportunities, we really have been transitioning and beefing up our college and career center with a much different emphasis on career. And so Michelle Vasquez has just done an amazing job in, in, in a post-secondary approach. We've always had counselors up there, but, but there was a huge college emphasis, to be perfectly honest with you, even though it was called college and career. She has put together partnerships with employers, career counseling, career planning, has really reached out to students through their individualized academic plans to really help them package together skill sets as well as, as a better understanding what career opportunities exist for them. And actually helping them do resume and, and interview preparation so that they, they can really start to launch for those students who want to go directly into work, into careers, launch those first entry level jobs. And I got to give her credit. I mean, I mean, you know, this is not a new thing for her, but, but this, this added emphasis. For example, we had a career night here, what about three weeks ago, three, four weeks ago now, and she was instrumental in putting that together. It was the second annual. And what did we have, Marcus, 50 employers or something? I mean, unbel- yeah, unbelievable. We all got to attend it. But literally lining, you know, all of these employers and post-secondary opportunities, something we never really used to do until just the last couple of years. And, and really getting, and it's open not only to students, but to students and their family members. So parents can come and they can really, you know, learn more about the career opportunities and talk directly to employers and that like. So that's what we have, have ramped up. And so when it came time to renew this agreement, it was, it was pretty clear that we wanted to stick with that aspect of the agreement for ETHS, but that we felt that we have a much more effective delivery system now.
Can you just clarify?
Yes.
That other person who's been hired, who's housed here at ETHS, paid for generously out of the Good Neighbor Funds of Northwestern, approved by city council. And anyway.
Yes, so, so.
Take it away.
It's the mayor's economic advisory council or committee that, that really has convened employers from around not only Evanston, but, but the area, the region. And Neil Gamble has been volunteering his time. The mayor found him. If you don't know Neil, you need to get to know him. This guy is amazing, how he has put together these contacts. In that context, the mayor, if you recall, each year for five years, Northwestern University has pledged a million dollars to be used by the mayor for, for needs within the city. And has allocated $100,000 of that million to, for this year, or for, starting now, but for this coming year and the year following, so that we can at least get, get a two-year project started where we actually are going to have an individual who is employed by the Youth Job Center, but is housed here at ETHS, who is going to dovetail with Neil, that mayor's economic development advisory council and, and these employers. Pardon me?
Employment Advisory Council, not economic. You said economic.
Oops, sorry about that.
Similar.
Employment advisory. And I can't remember if it's council or committee. Do you remember council? We call it MEAC is why. After a while, the acronym becomes the word. You know, it's like, I know it stands for one of those words. But, but we are very excited about this because this is actual job placement. So while, while through Michelle and through our college and career and post-secondary planning, we do a lot of ICAPS, individual career and academic plans. We do a lot of plans. We do a lot of, of skill development and a lot of career exploration. Now we have another component. And by the way, she's helped young people, a lot of our students, connect with employers. Not that we don't. But now we're going to have this pool of employers and jobs and be able to dovetail that with this onsite person who will literally be charged with, it's Tana, who will literally be charged with connecting students to employers and jobs, you know, while they're in the high school and as they near graduation. I think it's amazing. And I think the synergy with the city and, and, and the commitment in, in the school district and everything we've been doing with career and technical ed and dual credit and all the other ways that students can earn certifications and get prepared for jobs. I'll be frank, I think we have something very, very special going on. And Ms. Livingston, as well as Pete and I, are part of a post-secondary committee.
PAL.
Yes.
Prepared for Adult Lives.
The acronym is PAL.
Action Team. We're an action team.
And, and, and we, that's through created a career. And we have now been working with, with people within the community to mobilize how we as a community help spur on and, and help make this work more viable and, and more effective. So there's a lot going on right now in Evanston on this, and thank you for lifting that up. Quickly, in terms of the importance of having school resource officers in the school, just pick up the newspaper and see the, the threats that can exist in schools today. And know that we feel so much safer. And I feel, I speak for the, the adults and the students in this school, knowing that we have trained police officers in this school to provide us with that extra measure of onsite safety. But more important, they really have what I would call a community policing philosophy. That is, it's not the idea of simply being present for law enforcement, but for developing relationships, developing relationships within the community, having students see officers, get to know them, realize that, that they're not here to simply present a threat to students, but actually to present themselves, to create relationships, understanding and to be here in the event that, that, that school safety issues arise. And, you know, we've had these in the school a number of years. It does predate me. We had one officer for some years when I first arrived, 13 years ago. But we were able to expand that to two officers, understanding that, you know, we have 1.3 million square feet. We have at any given moment during the day, 4,000 or 5,000 even sometimes people in this building. And, and, and to be sure that we have at least a measure of adequate coverage. And if one officer, because they do have reports and things to file, has been, and they have to go to the police station to do it, has been called to the police station, there's always, I won't say always, always, but nearly always, at least one officer or usually two in the school doing community policing. So thank you for lifting that up. And yeah, they, they, they've really provided just a wonderful relationship building and, and service to the school.
I was just going to add that we have to change or switch out the chief of police name.
Is that, yes.
We have Richard Eddington.
Yeah, we do have to change that.
Well, that's really funny because, because the school drafted it. I mean, the city drafted it.
The city drafted it.
Yeah, the city, the city drafted it. So I think what's happened, I think what's happened is, is there's been a change since they did the original drafting.
Phoebe and I put in work on that, so.
Oh, wow.
We want the name there.
Yeah.
Yeah. That needs to be changed.
Chief Cook, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure, they're, should be approving this this evening as well. Hopefully somebody over there has spotted it.
Yeah, hopefully.
But, but I'll, but I'll make a note.
No.
Right. Okay. So with that change?
Yeah.
And any other questions? So there's a motion on the table. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of boys locker room renovations, phases one and two bid, approval of 2019-20 IHSA membership, approval of minutes from March 11th, 2019 closed session meeting, and March 11th, 2019 regular meeting. Treasurer's report from February 2019, approval of bills, personnel agenda, which consists of professional staff certified, resolution authorizing notice of dismissal to final, to final year probationary teacher, resolution granting tenure appointments, reappointment of part-time teachers, appointments to staff, exempt certified safety and operations, change in status stipends, leave of absence certified and resignation certified and support staff.
So move.
Second. Before we, could I ask a question about the locker rooms? Because I couldn't tell and I don't remember, Mary, from Jose's write-up on the boys locker rooms. I get asked this all the time by the kids, but in this phase, we're doing just the locker room that runs kind of like from the, across from the athletic office back to, to the, by the field house?
Yes.
We're not doing the athletic locker rooms that are on the other side of the field house.
Correct.
We're not doing those.
We're doing the boys PE locker room as part of phase one. And we are creating a hallway, which has been an ask for at least 10 years, that will go from the PE wing to the athletic wing.
Yeah, there is a hallway.
It exists now, but it's in the shower area of the boys locker room. Yeah, so that's. So, so phase one will be that PE locker room, which is in the worst shape and serves a large number of students every day. And then what's currently known as locker room number three, which is used as a privacy locker room by many transgender or students seeking privacy. The hallway will all, that will all be part of phase one. Phase two takes what used to be the old showers and turns those into PE and health classrooms and also addresses a portion of the team locker rooms that I think you're speaking about on the west side, right?
By the wrestling room, on the west side of the field house.
Yeah, on the west. Mm-hmm. And then the following year will address the girls PE locker room and, and build a new privacy locker room three as part of. But this is phase one and two.
And by the way, this is three consecutive summers. So when we say phase.
Right.
I mean, this summer and the next two, and we will have had all these locker rooms finally renovated.
And finally, phases one and two came in less than we expected. Yay, that never happens.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. There is a motion on the table, so can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. We are at old and new business. Do we have old or new business that anybody wants to lift? If not, polling of the board. Does anyone have any final comments to add? How am I doing on time? I didn't do it. They asked for an hour and a half. Okay.
Wait, I have one little thing. I just want to say, I mean, I know we gave a lot of attention and rightfully so to the teachers tonight who were tenured. But I just, I just want to say again how exciting it is to work and be in a place where our adults care as much as they do. And with Cory Winchester's Golden Apple, to the tenured teachers and all the wonderful things that people, we learned about those teachers tonight. I know that they are just part of, they are representative of a lot more people in this building. And, you know, it is, there are, we rely on our adults to do what we care about, which is make sure our kids are well taken care of and well educated. So I just want to thank those teachers, but all of our teachers for great, great, hard work.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And with that, can I have a motion to close? Move, motion?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.